The last one was not quite completely fit. It was laying flat. Initially, I put it like this. And it took me long to figure out that was the wrong idea. I should have done it like this. That way, I could put a couple pieces here and it literally would just roll in. That's so much better than anything I had. Well, it was. Very, 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 very.
George, you got us up and running? Yes, that is a pertinent question. You're a bill of search.
Inside that wall. That's us. The fourth part. So then I got another guy to make another set. Another set.
I think so. It will fall.
I think that rack falls down. I got one. Exactly.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
It's not possible. It'll be there. Oh, yeah. He's the house. Well. Well, if y'all just say, if y'all just say, Keely? You know, very good in a voice, but something like that. I'll find out, I'll tell you. Oh, they take drives. The woman is good. Yep, go take more.
We were thinking before the election that they pushed out. Because I think it gives them time to figure it out.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Did you not slip that tonight? Or did you know that, so you brought your bill of search and you slipped out?
Middle of the plan now. Has standing out regardless.
Sure, sure. If they need something.
It's sort of the same conversation we're having here about infrastructure. County soon, my word.
I was coming.
Did you get a change wage draft?
Andy, when did that auction close?
Chick was thirty behind.
It's already happened? And it happened on the way? And actually, the Polish speaker.
He didn't have a reserve on him. Touched out at seven sixty with the class.
I've been in this gentleman's room.
It sounds close.
He is for you. That is the bill.
Yeah, that's it.
Sure.
About that. If they like.
Something dealing with what came in the day. Is that a new one? That one night? I don't care.
I figured.
What do they call this?
Yeah, well, I don't see.
I'm not believing it. He may have been. Right where all. He'll do all those roads.
I can remember buying two hundred dollar low driver. Didn't buy any of that much, what the low driver cost. Yeah, I bought one couple of these, six, six hundred.
So what's going to happen?
Planning this, he's been denied. I will call this meeting to order. Hickman County Planning Commission Special Call Meeting, December the ninth. Discussing land use plan. We can have a road call, please, sir.
Will Mayberry?
Present.
Jeff Schirr?
Here.
Tony Taylor? Tommy Capps?
Here.
Danny Clark?
Here.
Andy Boone?
Present.
Bill Lane?
Here.
Jason Carter?
Here.
Claude Calacott?
Here.
Keith Nash?
Here.
Andy Maddox?
Here.
You do have a call, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda that is public comment period, and I will remind everybody that this is a special call meeting. No other business can be discussed besides the land use plan. I mean, I think this is going to be a pretty informal meeting, but if anybody wishes, I didn't get a note out there. I apologize. If anybody wishes to speak now, take those. Okay, all right, and then we will move on. And if there's, before I turn it over to Drew. And his group, is there any? Any comments that needs to be, come from the planning commission, anybody, or anything you might like to say before they get started? All right, Drew?
Sure, and yeah, so everybody's got our handout. If you didn't get one, just grab Miles and we'll make sure you have one. We'll just kind of be following along with this, so that everybody can see what I'm talking about. Before we get started, I do want to say, just really on behalf of the project team, how much we appreciated everybody's help and assistance and guidance with that round of public outreach engagement. I thought the attendance at our meetings was great. We've certainly done these before where the attendance is not so great and we don't get really good input. So really appreciated not only everybody getting the word out about the in-person workshops, but also the online tool. We had really good feedback on both. For a community this size, the amount of responsiveness that we got was great. So I think it was successful, not only from a numbers perspective, but also, you know, from the input that we were able to get from everybody. So going to kind of flip through, if you'll go to the agenda today. I do want to spend a few minutes talking about what we heard. This is by no means exhaustive necessarily, but it's kind of a high level readout of the input that we got. But I'll kind of walk you through key findings. I also want to briefly touch on the suitability analysis that we did, based on some of the data that was provided. And then what I want to spend most of the time today talking about are these, of course, to kick off the scenario analysis. What we'll be looking to do between now and by middle and late January is to put together some place types that will populate these various scenarios. So I want to talk about really what we want to tease out from the scenario analysis and how we want to approach that. We've got an example in there, so if you've flipped to that already, it is just an example, but we'll talk through that. But first, going on to the green title slide, public engagement key findings, if you'll flip along with me. We've got some summary statistics from that. So we had four hundred and thirty-one total responses that were recorded. What that does not include are people who visited the website. There were quite a few many more visits to the website than there were folks that recorded comments. So I know that there were some people that got unlooked and maybe looked multiple times or didn't leave any input. And that also includes only the recorded responses that we got back. We also had, as many of you know, really productive conversations with folks at the workshop. On the interactive map, we had two hundred and ninety-three responses and a hundred and thirty-eight survey responses. And just to give you an idea of who we heard from, some of the survey information we asked, most of the participants, I think it was forty-seven percent, are longtime residents here, so greater than twenty-year tenure. So we heard from a lot of longtime folks from Hickman County. Nearly half of respondents both live and work here in the county. So again, just to give you an idea of kind of who we were talking to. All right, so I'll walk you through some of the stations, if you flip to the next one. And these roughly correspond to the stations that we had in the workshop. But one of the first things that we did was ask folks, and as you all recall, kind of what their favorite things are about Hickman County and what they feel are missing. And again, that's a very high level question. This is just kind of a simple word cloud that distills that. Under favorite, you see a lot of things, you see themes start to emerge that are going to really permeate through the remainder of the feedback that we got. In terms of favorite things, people really value the rural community, the small-town life, and some of the natural resources, among other things. And when you look at things that are missing, I find this one a little bit more interesting. Some people said growth is missing, some people said nothing is missing. And a lot of the missing things really had to do with matters of convenience or local development. So certainly in some of our conversations with folks, these were things like community facilities and services, expanded opportunities for those types of activities, also businesses, particularly local businesses, opportunities for more local commerce, as well as infrastructure things like sewer and the like. So again, that's just a high level kind of overview of what we heard. We've got all of that recorded individually, but I think it represents a theme that you'll start to see emerge as we walk through this. So on the next public engagement, station number two, so on this slide now. What you see here are really two kind of distillations of our dot exercise. So on the left, you see a distillation, and again, this is a summary, so this isn't all the dots we received, it's just generally a summary of change and preserve. So one of the things that we asked people was, okay, assuming that change is going to happen over the next twenty years, where are the areas that you think that would be most appropriate? And where are the areas that you'd really like to see preserved? And you also see over on the right, some of those interactive map comments. In the orange are the desired changes, and over on the green are the places to preserve. And you see a fairly consistent pattern here. And again, this held through, really through most of the workshops that we had, I think all four of them. It really reinforced the current development pattern of the county. So I think people generally are comfortable or indicated a level of comfort with change in areas that are already experiencing growth, Bonacqua and Miles among them. There were also some, you know, opportunities for potential strategic growth, like in the interchange areas. And then we also heard a little bit about some potential nodal development, and I'll talk more about that in a minute, in some of these crossroads areas. And I think that really comes back to some of that more locally oriented, you know, local commerce that I mentioned just a second ago. So if you'll turn over, and I want to make sure I contextualize this one properly. If you turn to the next one, what we did here, this is what we call a halo analysis. And basically, what we did was we divided the county just into these smaller geographies of roughly about five acres, and assigned each one with a color based on the closest dot that the software could find. So this is just another way to look at it, so that you're not looking at individual dots, you're actually looking at kind of what the closest one was. And again, you know, obviously, when you get down here in kind of the southwest part of the county, there were fewer dots. So the effect was more exaggerated, but the general pattern was basically the same. Where a lot of the reinforcement of the current development trends in Bonacqua and in the Centerville area, and like I mentioned before, potential areas for new development or redevelopment on the interchange areas and some of that small-scale commercial development. And so again, I was just asking people generally where they would prefer to see change or preservation. We dug down a little bit deeper on the next, going on to station number three here. This was that place types exercise again, where we just used general development forms that are already in the county to get a better idea of where people would like to see these types of development patterns, whether they exist there currently or they don't. And on the right, you can see that halo analysis again. This one, I think, is a little bit more illuminating because we are asking, you know, more detailed questions about the type of development. And again, you see this same pattern really holding firm, just with a little bit more detail on it. Diversity of place types up in Bonacqua, you know, a lot more of the town center type development around the Centerville area, rural residential over the eastern county, and then this rural pastoral, really everywhere else. You see the highway retail up along the, up along those interchange areas. Flipping to the next one, when we asked people also which ones that they, which place types or development types that they liked, people generally liked, and these were, I think, pretty high levels of like versus dislike. Town center, the limited retail hub, rural pastoral, and rural residential. People, I think, were a little bit more skeptical about the highway scaled commercial, and I think a little of that might have to do with the picture we chose. And then the suburban living, kind of that scaled residential development, generally people were not fans of that. And didn't, that one was pretty well-miled, I think. So again, reinforcement of current commercial development trends, and a preference for additional housing opportunities in the retail key areas. And again, hesitation concerning suburban style housing development scale. So moving on to station number four here. This is the one that we added at your suggestion, and I think it's really illuminating. Where we just asked people very open into, you know, what would you like to see in these parts of the county? And I've got the red, the red circle and the green circle there on the side, because these two rows generally correspond with where people on the dot exercise wanted to see, or were comfortable, I should say, with change and where people would prefer to see preservation. And again, when we do this word density exercise, you see this holding firm. So Bonacqua, Miles, and Centerville, a lot of the feedback that we got in terms of what people would like to see in the future generally corresponded with what you would consider to be additional development or additional growth opportunities. And when you go down to Nutley, Dunk River, and Pleasant View, those three communities, you see nothing, farming, community, rural. And a general preference for that, for those areas remaining rural as they are now, people really didn't want to see much change there. And again, that held firm across our four workshops and the feedback that we got online. So if you'll flip over to other observations, and then I'll pause for discussions or questions. One thing that we recognized, I mentioned that, you know, a lot of the feedback that we got were from longtime Hickman County residents who both live and work here. Some of the conversations that we had, particularly with some of the younger individuals that came to the workshops, was a concern about the need for additional housing. So, you know, as people continue to move into the county, even if it's at a relatively low rate, you're still going to see households split as younger folks, you know, turn eighteen and go off to school or get a job and move out of their parents' house, and are looking for an opportunity to start their own household. So how do we balance that need of, or how do we balance that general preference for preservation and conservation with the need to try to boost the housing supply, not only for folks that might be moving into the county, but also folks that currently live here, that later on will need to look at renting or purchasing a property? Another thing that came through in our comments on the survey and also in our conversations with folks, preservation of natural resources was a huge topic, and I know that that's been a huge topic in the community here in recent months. Water resources and farmland were two things that we heard pretty loud and clear from folks, that they wanted to see preservation. Another trade-off that we saw was convenience and the trade-offs of rural lifestyles. So a lot of the folks that we talked to in some of the comments that we got, you know, I think people choose to live in a rural community. Part of the trade-off of doing that is that you've got to drive a little bit further for conveniences like grocery stores, and that is just a fact of life of living in a more rural community. But also, you know, are there areas where we can look at more convenient business offerings? And in my view, I think that really goes back to some of that small-scale, more locally oriented business activity that I talked about earlier. Another thing that we heard about was just improved or expanded community facilities, parks, you know, recreation centers and the like. And then underlying all of this, and I'll get to this when we talk about scenario analysis, are the infrastructure constraints. So obviously, sewer and water availability at the end of the day is going to determine where a lot of this growth occurs, particularly anything at scale. In our conversations with people, I think most folks really seem to understand that. So again, that's kind of a, that's kind of a quick thirty thousand foot view of what we heard from people. I want to pause and, before I move into talking about the next phase of the project, I want to pause and see if that's generally consistent with what you all heard in your conversations, or if there are any other things that came up that you wanted to talk about in terms of the public engagement, specifically what you heard. Yes, sir?
The, on the, like this, does the size of the word have an indication of?
It does.
The bigger the word, the more input there was on the floor of that.
Yeah, so if they're larger, that's a word that came up a lot more frequently. And, you know, it is free of context when you're just looking at word density, but based on our review of the comments, I think it's pretty consistent with the spirit of the input that we got to. Right? So the next thing that we did, so moving on to suitability and key findings, and again, if anybody has any questions or observations about public engagement, happy to come back to that. What we did with our suitability analysis, so, you know, I mentioned during our public workshops that going into the scenario analysis, we really have two different data points, right? So we've got the, you know, the preference that's been expressed from the folks that have interacted with either our public workshops or our online tool, but then we also have the data that we've collected and what some of those constraints are. So on the map here, again, I'm on this, what we have here is that same grid that I talked about. So I want to emphasize that this is not parcel-based, given the difference in parcel sizes. We wanted to kind of compare apples to apples, so we just divided the county up into these smaller geographies, just so it didn't, it didn't look goofy, which it can when you have a lot of large parcels. But what we did here was we created a scoring mechanism to look at land suitability based on physical constraints and market factors. And so some of the physical constraints that we looked at were steep slopes, and specifically looking at topography that's in excess of about a fifteen percent change in slope. So these are the steeper areas that where you're going to have a little bit more difficulty building anything other than maybe a single-family residence. We also looked at floodplains in public lands, including railroad right-of-way. We looked at infrastructure, water and sewer, also proximity to primary and secondary roads. Public facilities and services, and really what I mean by that are places where you have schools or parks, places where you already have some density of development, that tends to invite more development. And then some of the other things that we looked at were existing development patterns, specifically land that's currently in a residential use. We assume that that will remain in a residential use regardless of where the plan ends up, and also farmland. And so we looked at prime agricultural soils and land that's currently in farming production. And when we took an initial pass at this, the pattern that you see on the map here, where you see the darker colors, that's land that, again, based on these inputs purely, or the dark colors are where you would likely have a higher propensity for development. And as you get into these lighter colors or even the white colors, that's land that probably would not be as compelling from a market perspective for development. And again, this reinforces the general pattern we're already seeing, that, you know, areas where you already have development, where you already have infrastructure, also probably benefit from a lack of some of these hard physical constraints, like steep slopes, like floodplains. And so we see a reinforcement of that pattern. Again, you know, you can see along some of the linear roadway facilities, you know, that pops up, and that's likely due to just being flatter and located along roadway. But, you know, I would caution anyone from really looking too closely at one specific area or another here. The purpose of this is to give us another data point to look at in addition to the public input. And as we go into the scenario development phase, we are going to use, again, just these general factors of suitability to determine where development is more or less likely. So any questions about the suitability analysis? Yes, sir?
You mentioned that if it's residential, you foresee it staying residential. So that's what's giving some higher scores around roadway?
It is, I think the roadway scores probably have more to do with the fact that it's flat out of a floodplain alongside a major road. If a parcel, so if a, if the land area in that specific geography is currently of a residential use, it would actually get a lower score. So it would, it would lower the score slightly relative to some of the other inputs. Because again, when we go, when we go forward, we assume that, you know, if you have a parcel that's single-family house, it's going to be a single-family house in perpetuity. Now, that certainly, I suppose, could change, but from a future land use planning perspective, we assume that, you know, if a parcel's in residential use, that it's going to remain that way. It's not going to be subdivided into multifamily, it's not going to be converted to commercial. So the developability of that parcel is relatively lower than maybe the one next to it that doesn't have a house on it. All right, so moving on, this is where I wanted to spend most of the meeting and really get y'all's take on the next steps for us with the scenario analysis. So real quick, before we talk about potential scenarios, one thing I want to mention I do is to define what we mean by scenario analysis. This is a series of scenarios that reflect exaggerated version of reality. So it's not a multiple choice test. You know, when you're doing scenario analysis, it's not, okay, here's A, B, and C, pick one, and that's the one we're going with. What we're trying to do is tease out trade-offs by exaggerating what might happen under a specific scenario. And on the next slide, I'll give you an example. And this is really used to frame the discussion, and, you know, Claude and I were talking before the meeting, I might be jumping ahead here, but, you know, early next year, we'd like to get the stakeholders back in with our place type definitions and with an initial sketch of these scenarios, and see if there's anything that we're missing in terms of specific factors that they would be concerned with, that they would be concerned with. And again, I've got this little graphic on the side, you can kind of see, this is a, you know, simplified version of the trade-offs that we're looking at. Preservation versus change, you know, rural character versus housing. You know, protecting the resources and assets versus maybe looking at strategic development opportunities. So on the next slide, I've got some examples of potential scenarios. And, you know, we didn't just dream these up in a vacuum. These are based on the data points that we got from the public and some of the trade-offs that we looked at. And these are, again, potential scenarios. I'll walk through each of these real quick and really talk about what some of these trade-offs might be. And then I'd like to get y'all's take to see if there are other, you know, other avenues that you might like to look at or other, maybe a different approach to some of these scenarios. So first, one thing that we heard a lot of from folks was rural conservation. Basically, we like Hickman County like it is, you know, we're dealing You know, we're dealing with a little bit of growth pressure in the northeast part of the county. We really like to keep things like they are. So what would it look like if we did just that? What would it look like if, you know, development generally became restricted except for by right development as allowed in the zoning ordinance? And we really emphasized preservation of open space, you know, not subdividing large parcels, preservation of open land, limited growth beyond where that existing development footprint is, and really no more development along some of the major corridors. You know, a lot of the development, particularly, you know, we just drove in from the Fairview area. You've got a lot of linear development there along Highway 100. You know, if we just, for lack of a better term, put a glass dome over the county, what would that look like in terms of housing availability? What would that look like in terms of fiscal impact? What would that impact be? How many future residents that are projected might struggle to find places to live, for example? So again, that's, you know, potential scenario number one. Another one is the trend, kind of business-as-usual scenario. This is where we would just work to extrapolate current trends. So the current development trends that we're seeing, you know, if we were to, again, you know, as best we can extrapolate those out, and that would include, you know, fairly limited expansion of infrastructure. You know, all the future development will really be located in where you have these existing growth areas. And you would continue to see that linear development along corridors. So what does that look like? Where does that get us? And then looking at what we're calling expanded centers, and again, that may not be a great name, but this is where we look at, in addition to build out in the current development areas, maybe looking at some other micro-development nodes and specifically more nodal development. So I mentioned that a lot of the current development patterns in the county right now are linear. You know, what if we looked at, for lack of a better term, a village or crossroads center where you had maybe a little bit of density in terms of, you know, a couple of commercial businesses and the like? What would that look like? And again, that would necessitate looking at, you know, expanded infrastructure. So what would the impact be on the sewer capacity? What would the impact be on the sewer lines? And so again, these three scenarios, you know, none of them are one that we would necessarily, I mean, maybe we would, but the idea here would be to develop a series of indicators based on each one. So that in addition to just looking at the map and seeing what the general development pattern being proposed is, we also have some quantifiable metrics that we can evaluate on. They'll be high-level, they'll be sketch-level, but it gives us a way to compare apples to apples, particularly as it relates to different growth, you know, outcomes, particularly housing, infrastructure, and the like. And then on the, kind of over here on this other access, throughout all of these would also be a review of the existing zoning and land development regulation framework to see if there are adjustments that would need to be made to essentially realize the development patterns for each of these. So it would be, again, looking at land development patterns, looking at infrastructure availability, you know, can the infrastructure support this particular vision? And then conducting a zoning regulation review for each. So, A, general questions, if you have them. And B, do these scenarios, based on your experience and the challenges that you all have in the development decisions, do these make sense? Are these landing on the types of trade-offs that you'd like to examine?
Hold up. The three potential scenarios. The public input. Was the rural conservation, was that the one that was discussed? Or is that one that will have the most hits? Or are these in any order, I guess is my question?
So these are in order kind of from, we ordered them this way, just really along this axis down here.
Yeah.
Rural conservation, less infrastructure. So there are no particular order, but in developing these, what we were trying to do was to balance, you know, anytime you ask the public, you're going to get conflicting answers in half the way. And so we thought that these were some of the really major themes that came out, both from just our discussions as well as all the recorded input that we got. And that this would be a really good starting point in terms of trying to tease out what the trade-offs would be among those different things.
Like we've talked about since the beginning, of course, I don't like the word "control." I just can't think of a better word. But to hold on to more of that rule, it's going to have to be done with zoning. That's, I think that's been the discussion. You're going to have to get the zoning figured out. And to worry, if you don't, the farms busted up, you're going to have to zone them to keep that from happening.
I think that's a good point, Robert. I mean, you know, I won't say doing nothing, but, you know, no development is still a policy decision. And I should add too, Robert, you know, as we, this is after we get through the scenario development, after we take that, you know, take these sketches back out to the public and allow them another opportunity to give us feedback. The next step beyond that would be looking at what we have on our scope is, for lack of a better term, the preferred growth scenario. So taking the constituent parts of these that we think are most appropriate for the county going forward, and we would provide some backend guidance on, again, just, you know, high-level guidance on what you all might consider in terms of updating the zoning ordinance. But that's obviously not a decision that we make, but we can certainly provide recommendations and guidance for that.
Well, just give the planning commission the, where they can make that decision on that zone. If something comes up and brought forward, and if the zone stops it, that's where it can stop.
Smash.
So, and I'm getting, I guess I'm segueing in on what Robert was saying and what you had said a minute ago. So that's where, from the 30,000-foot, whatever view you guys look at, you would be suggesting, recommending, I meant recommending, suggesting that these existing development types that would be somehow supplanted into the plan that would go along with whatever this development growth scheme is. So after y'all have listened to this, you know, what are the, you know, additional development types? What are you talking about?
Sure, so the place types, that would be the next step in this process, and what we would be looking to bring to you all, the stakeholders. The place types, you know, generally, and so we had the development types earlier. Let me just make sure that I'm not confusing any of them. So we had the development types that were presented at the public workshop. Those were kind of simplified development types that are present throughout the county. Our place types, that would inform these scenarios, would be based, A, on existing development types and things allowed under existing zone, right? So it would generally be reflected with that. They may also be reflected in things that are not currently allowed under the existing zoning ordinance. And what the place types are, they're not just, it's not just, you know, a development form where, you know, we have a residential place type, or we have this limited commercial place type. They're also going to be accompanied by those indicators that I mentioned earlier. So, you know, you're going to look at what the housing yield might be under that place type, what the, you know, commercial square footage might be. You know, the impact on sewer, impact on schools based on average household type and the like. So those place types are things that we would plug into, you know, a future land use map and use to develop those indicators across those three scenarios. So, you know, the place types would be summarized in a table that would have those, that would have those indicator categories along them. And then you would get a roll-up of the sum of all of those individual items. So again, you know, housing development yield, commercial square footage yield, and the like. And that is the quantifiable information that you would get to compare these in addition to just looking at the, you know, looking at the map and looking at what the development form looks like.
Would it be fair to say in some way that what you're describing is taking the Station 2, the change and preserve overlay with the suitability, and then laying the existing zone on top of that to see where they fit together?
So with this particular approach with the scenarios, yes, we would be looking at those two data points and then developing these scenarios, again, that exaggerate these trade-offs. So, you know, to use your example with that one, where you have preserve, maybe we go all-in on preserve and just glass dome that, for lack of a better term. And expanded centers, maybe it looks a little bit closer to the red that you see on that map, even though that is admittedly exaggerated. But that's what we're trying to do, is to take the input that we got, again, it's the data that you all have provided, and try to develop a way to talk about trade-offs. Because ultimately, I think that's really the big decision that needs to be made in terms of the preferred, you know, whatever the preferred land use plan looks like is, you know, what balance are we striking among these trade-offs? I mean, that's ultimately, in my view, that's ultimately the question that we're trying to answer for you all.
But is that for the existing structure that we've got in place right now and expanding what we have available to us as far as the support for those areas? That people, people are, you know, I look at the scale and I see it tipping towards the change.
Oh, that's...
Hear what Andy says, you know, and that's what I was thinking. Something where you could take like Station 2 and overlay it on a suitability, but then you come over here and you have preserve and change. I think we're, are we looking only at what we have now? Or are we getting out there in the future with regard to infrastructure and also identifying those areas that we need for future growth that's consistent with what we see back here on, like, Station 2?
I would say it's both. So it is working with what you have, but it's also, and again, we don't have a crystal ball, but looking at, you know, what, what pattern of development would we like to see in 20 years? And then following that up, you know, I think infrastructure, you mentioned that, is the big limiting factor. I mean, we can assume that sewered areas are, that, you know, those are the only places where you're going to be able to do any development scale right. So, you know, we can't predict what market conditions, we can guess in conjunction with stakeholders, but we can't predict necessarily what market conditions are going to look like for sewer or water expansion. But what we can do is develop a policy vision and a policy guidance for, you know, if sewer expands, you know, for example, we know that this is an area that's been identified for growth. We know this is the type of growth that we've identified there. And again, that helps you all with your decision-making process. Any updates that you might have to make to the zoning ordinance, but also with individual development that poses also. So I guess to answer your question, really it's yes and. It's yes, you know, working with what you have now, and trying to, based on some of the preferences that we got, extrapolate those in the future 20 years.
Because I think that's what Carlos, that's going to be critical for you.
Yes, Claudia, you're rounding.
So I guess just quickly going back to, just going back to those potential scenarios, you know, I mentioned these trade-offs between preservation, rural preservation, and also looking at some expanded growth opportunities, particularly as they relate to housing and commercial development. Maybe in your experience, are those some of the trade-offs? Are those some of the tensions that you all are having to deal with? Are there other ones that we need to be aware of? Are there other ones that we need to try to tease out in the scenario development process?
Is that a question?
Yes, sir.
I'm a little unclear on the question.
So, for example, you know, with rural conservation, we're looking at, okay, let's just assume for a moment that very little changes in terms of growth and development. And then looking at expanded centers, you know, that might be where we look at. If you have additional development opportunities, additional land identified for development, you might have more housing and commercial opportunities. That was a, I won't say a source of tension, but those were conflicting visions or conflicting preferences that we heard. So I guess what I'm trying to add is, are there other conflicting preferences that you all either have personally or conversations that you've had with constituents that we could potentially try to get at with the scenario analysis? You know, another one that's unspoken here is, you know, with the infrastructure question, and we kind of have that along the bottom, with looking at what, you know, to, you know, to realize a specific growth pattern, what infrastructure expansion in the future would have to be to accommodate that. But I guess what I'm asking is, again, are there other conflicting preferences that you all have encountered that you'd like to see maybe some quantifiable information on? Or just another way to evaluate them?
Me personally, in conversations, it does seem, it's not everybody, but there does seem to be, like, the most common is the, we'll leave it like it is. And then on the other side of that is the, you know, we need more, you know, we need more growth. I mean, that seems to be, I mean, what you talked about is the, that's most of the conversations that... And I think probably there's those that I've talked to that are, you know, they're on that side of, would we like our hometown feel? It's the, it would be nice if we had this, but if we can keep that hometown feel, you know, if that's possible, you know, that's, but that's the conversations I've had, is that there's some that they want to, they want a lot of growth, if possible, and then there's, you know, just as many that are, you know, you know, they would love to put that device down over the camp. And so that's the, what y'all have, what you have already talked about. You know, that's the conversations that I have, that people have had with me, so.
And that, I mean, that's fairly consistent with kind of what our primary takeaway was.
So the, Drew, the question that I would have then, I mean, I think, you know, I believe that you've got a good handle on the atmosphere and the tone of the conversation. I guess in my mind, I'm trying to figure out how we progress beyond that. I mean, again, the, you know, you talk, you know, every other word, we don't, every other word in all this is infrastructure. And it's, I mean, it starts with roads. I mean, there's a lot of land that's flat and flitter. There are no roads, you know, and the majority of it is probably held. But, you know, there's roads, there's electric, water, sewer, gas, you know. So how do we take at least those five identifiable infrastructure limitations and introduce those, because what we talked about a minute ago was the tone and the tenor and the atmosphere. Now we're talking about the reality.
Right.
So how do we take, and I'm sure there's more than just those five I just, you know, pointed out, but how do we take those five and put it, and inject that with that tone and atmosphere into some document that is this growth plan? I'm just asking, I mean, I'm kind of curious, obviously, I hope you guys have done this as early a time yet, you have a three-sentence answer for me, so.
Yeah, so I guess the short answer is this. First off, with the, you know, once we start working through scenarios, we're going to schedule stakeholder meeting, get our utility folks back in here, want to have a discussion with them, hey, we've got, you know, this is an initial sketch. Is this insane? You know, let's take expanded centers, for example. Are we, are we all, you know, are we need to be committed? Is this insane? The other part of that too is that this is a policy document. So, you know, we're really looking at things at a 30,000-foot view from a land use perspective, but it does send signals. So when you put out a policy document, you know, you identify a land that, you know, may or may not be developed right now, but you are signaling not only to residents and each other, but you're also signaling to people who might consider development and your partners with gas, water, sewer, that this is, this is our policy preference. So as opposed to, you know, if, you know, I'm not, I don't work in the sewer business, but let's say I worked in the sewer business. You're looking at, you know, you're trying to evaluate what your expansion plans might look like over a 10- or 15-year period. If you don't know what the policy preference is for the land that you may or may not service, it really makes it impossible to make those types of decisions because, you know, depreciation will eat you alive if you extend a sewer line. if you extend a sewer line down along property that's, that's not going to plug into it. So there, and I know I'm getting longer three sentences here, but it, it's a little chicken in the egg because obviously, development invites infrastructure expansion, infrastructure expansion invites development. And so what this is, is the county signaling to not only residents, but also anybody that might develop and some of these utility providers, what the, what the preference is going forward or what will be allowed under, under this body going forward. So it sends those signals and it does have some impact on what that market reaction might be.
So that policy document that you're talking about, which is the growth plan, that signals that intention by virtue of the fact that you identify the growth areas.
Correct.
And that, and the identification of those growth areas is based on real and possible infrastructure adjustments and reality, what's there now and what may be in the future.
Yes, so the, these, one thing I'll say, the scenarios might be, like, beginning, just go with this one because it's the one that might be a little exaggerated. That might stretch the boundaries of reality. But what we would do is that's an opportunity for us to examine that trade off from an infrastructure, from an infrastructure perspective. So we would definitely want to get the input of your gas, water, electric sewer folks. You know, does this look insane? You know, are, are we getting laughed out of the room, you know, with something like this from a market perspective? Or if these, let's assume for a moment that these changes do come in, you do start seeing that type of development in these areas. You know, would market pressure allow you to respond to that by providing service to those areas?
And I, and I, and I'm going to, that was my next question. Because, you know, you talk about this potential scenarios as, as if it's a, you know, this would be county. It's not a one size fits all. So it very well may be an expanded centers in some, you know, over here. But then it may be rural conservation over here. You know, so those are, at least the way you've got this written here, it's, it's, I mean, I'm not going to say it's conflicting, but it is conflicting. So how, so how do you take those different concepts and scenarios and, and don't, and, you know, you're not going to try to homogenize this across the entire size of the county. And how, how do you go in there and, and, okay, so this area will be the one that we're going to have, we're going to, we're going to have, the tip of our spear is going to be that rural conservation. In this area over here, the tip of our spear is going to be that business as usual. And over here, that tip of our spear is going to be the expanded, the expanded centers. How, how, you know, because you're talking, I almost hear you saying, you guys have got to go pick one in order for us to go flesh it out. And I, and I'm like, I don't know how we pick one because I can see where all of these fit somewhere within the scope of the county.
Yeah, so they, I think you hit on it, they are conflicting. They're, they're supposed to be conflicting. So again, what we're trying to do is, is tease out what the impact is of each of these. And again, you know, we are picking scenarios to develop and to evaluate, but we're not picking a preferred scenario to actually carry forward in the policy document. So what this allows us to do is take a look at what, you know, what, what these individual ones look like. And then kind of pick, you know, it's, it's not really a, and either or, it's kind of column A, column B, column C. So you might pick a little from column A, a little from column B, a little from column C. And so what this allows us to do, again, working with you all, is to look at, you know, what these exaggerated differences are, both on the map and quantifiable. And then we're also going to take these out to the public. So whatever we end up developing, you know, whether it's this or whether it's slightly different, our next round of public engagement will be to go and provide this to the public. And so in addition to the work that we do with you all and the stakeholders, both talking about some of those market issues like infrastructure, for example, we also want to get an idea of preferences from the public as well. So the data points that we would have coming out of this are the guidance and feedback that we get from you all, the guidance and feedback that we get from our stakeholders, and then what the public tells us they prefer. And this will give them sort of exaggerated differences to react to. And then the subsequent step to that would be taking all that together and taking the constituent pieces of, you know, A, B, and C, and melling them together to get as close as we can to what we think is not only possible, but what's also generally been, you know, expressed as being preferred.
When I look at the, like the, the stations two and three, I mean, I think it really leads to of the, of the potential scenarios, I mean, it's going to be geographical.
Yep.
I mean, and that's, I mean, I think that's how, and well, and it's not just, I mean, there's other things just besides what, you know, the, the stations, the engagement part, I mean, I mean, you've got some, you've got some terrain constraints. I mean, too, I mean, when you look, I can't remember what page it was, I mean, but it was a pretty good. You could, you could see there's certain areas of our county that are going to be extremely hard to develop because they're going to have to move a lot of dirt.
Yep.
And so, I mean, I, I mean, from, from what I'm seeing, I mean, you get up there, you know, the, like the station four, the Bon Aquila Isles, you know, and I guess even the center, well, I don't know if the infrastructure is centerable, totes it. But, I mean, that's more on the, the expanded center part. And I, and I understand that we, right now, we have linear development. And, and I mean, they, that may not be a bad thing. I mean, I haven't thought about the nodal part, you know, trying to get off of those main, you know, the, you know, the main lines, you know, the Highway 146, you know, deal. But I mean, I, I see, you know, you get down in the Pleasantville area, I mean, it's rural conservation. I mean, the, where I, where I live, it's going to be the same type of thing. It's, it would be hard to find, you know, spots to put houses, you know, a lot of houses that you, because if it's flat, it's usually flooded. And so, I mean, I think it's going, it's going to have to be geographical and, you know, and go from there. So, I mean, it's, and then I, and I think that, I mean, I think it being a policy document and being geographical, I mean, I think that's fine. I mean, we expand the growth area, you know, east of the county and, and, you know. I mean, I, I, that's, that's kind of how I see everything pointing. I don't, you know, and I don't think that you meant that one scenario is going to fit the county. And I do think that it's going to be, you know, spots that, you know, are, are, you know, showing up on the maps, you know, from the, you know, you know, really, I guess it's the suitability part, you lay that over there, and I guess that's what they were saying there. So, I mean, was that your plan, was to kind of look at geographically and then fit scenarios for those or?
Yeah, I mean, all, all of the scenarios will recognize the, the geographic, you know, differences in the county. So with expanded centers, I would expect that to, you know, put super high intensity development in the, in the southwest part of the county. It, it really is a way to exaggerate some of these differences, get people to react to them, and then get a little bit closer to what the preference is. But I, I, you know, another way to do this would be to try to lay out three, you know, I won't say plausible, but, but really more of a select one. You know, here are three different scenarios, pick one, which one do you like? And I, I think it's, it's helpful to exaggerate things a little bit and understand how people react to something that might be slightly more exaggerated than what you actually land on. It also gives you the opportunity to, I don't want to say throw out their ideas, because everything, we want to keep somewhat grounded in reality. But to, to put ideas out there that maybe people hadn't thought about before. The nodal development being one, that we definitely got some input on that. But, you know, what does that look like in practice and how do people feel about that?
With the nodal type development, be it, what's would reach that point in the policy development, would that be a place to use the tools and incentivize it, like with TFS or pilot and programs, that kind of thing?
Potentially, yeah, I mean, it, it depends, but if you're looking at, at, you know, commercial development, and again, I keep coming back to this, but small scale, local commercial development is a lot of, that would be an excellent use of those types of tools. You know, especially with, you know, how, especially with the fact that a lot of the areas that were identified for that aren't generally well served by commercial opportunities. We also had to talk about tourism and other, you know, potential things that could, that could spin off a lot.
Yeah, I was gonna.
I'm certainly happy.
Yeah, I was gonna, and, and looking at the crowd, I don't think it would get too out of hand. I don't like, I mean, there's a few characters out there, but let's say, why make it this night a little bit more entertaining? Get more views, Jason Brock yesterday, but yeah, if anybody that's on that side, you know, y'all got questions or input?
I have one question. I have property in Northland and Pleasantville. And I'm residing in the Pleasantville right now area. So most of the shopping that I about doing, sorry to tell you all this, but a lot of it is outside of Hickman County. So are we taking into consideration any money in our, like, neighboring counties that's being spent out there to kind of see what we might need?
It's, it's a little difficult to capture dollars that are flowing outside of the county, but it's not difficult to capture potential fiscal impact. So again, you know, if you have a commercial development, you know, we can make some assumptions based on what the sales tax receipts might be there. It's, it's hard to compare it against how much is going out of the county. But that's an area where you might see a, you know, a net increase in tax receipts, for example.
I mean, for me, I think it would be great. I don't want to see a lot of growth. I live here in Hickman County on purpose. It's great. I do, I don't want a lot of development. But I do, I would rather spend my money here if I could, but sometimes I don't have that option. So, you know, I think it makes sense that we need some. And if we could actually have a little bit of growth in Pleasantville specifically, it might encourage other counties' residents to come here to spend money, and I think that would be beneficial. But then there's also utilities and those things. So I was curious if we can take those things into consideration.
Yes, so I mean, we will as best we can. And again, you're hitting on something that we heard a lot. We heard a lot of very similar comments during the public interface. Yes, infrastructure and utilities are, that's a question that, you know, we'll, we'll try to look at. But ultimately, those are also evaluated, just kind of on a case by case basis. But I think we can maybe get closer to some actionable recommendations to, you know, for, just to have those shopping opportunities a little bit closer, closer to home. Because we heard that a lot. Yes, sir.
Yeah, so in the existing growth plan that we're basically going to replace, it, it has growth areas that were designated. Is that still going to be part of the new plan that they would either expand, contract, be relocated as far as growth areas?
So, so two things with that, you know, we, we are reviewing those original growth areas. What we're proposing to do is to add just a little bit more detail in the recommendations. So those growth areas will be captured by place type designation. So rather than just looking at, you know, here's a, here's a circle and that's where growth would be, we're going to, we're going to try to add a little bit more detail about what, what type of growth might be most appropriate there.
Yeah, and, and in doing that, and I think this is what you were saying, is you'd be trying to say, in this particular area, then we need to encourage infrastructure that would support that type of place type or, or growth. And so, you know, that's why I see, you know, in terms of the different, what were they called? The scenarios, I mean, really, you know, a scenario for Pleasantville, you know, would potentially be totally different than the scenario for East Hickman, Bon Aquila, and the 46-100 area. And that's okay. Isn't that what you want to do? You want to say, this is where we want to encourage this type of development or, or remain the same? And, you know, end up with a plan that indicates the policy preferences of the county in that regard?
Yes, and so with the geographic differences, with, let's just take Pleasantville, for example. You know, the, the scenarios, my personal, three different, you know, growth patterns for Pleasantville.
Yeah.
And again, we would, we would be looking to get feedback on which one of those is most preferred. So, you know, it, you know, we'll essentially Frankenstein together for like a better term to define those scenarios to get closer to what's better.
Right. And, you know, same for Centerville, you know, so, you know, that's an area that obviously has great potential and yet it's, you know, got a long way to go to get to where, you know, it's a tourist attraction or things of that nature. So, you know, the town square.
Todd, did you have something?
Yeah, I had a question since this, people are seeing it. I've done my, you see, I own a farm and he understood a conversation a while ago that this could be in a direction that property that he owns, he might never do, sell it, build homes on. Can you address that issue with, I mean, we had a hit that just for a minute ago. And I had a second question, this, in the process of this, is we're talking about infrastructure. Will it be known to the county on what cost will be and how it'll be paid for to do this infrastructure work? Because it's going to be limited in where it goes, but it's going to be a burden for the entire county. Those are the two questions I had.
So I'm, I'm happy to try to address that first one. So the, the future land use plan will express a policy preference for a specific piece, you know, parcel of property. So for example, just take the farm, you know, let's say that, that the farm is designated as, you know, agriculture open space. You know, that that's the place that we landed on. Does that restrict that farm for development in perpetuity? Not necessarily. What it does is it expresses that that is the policy intent of the county going forward. But again, these are recommendations that can be revisited in the future. I think amending the land use plan, you know, once it's in place, is something that should be done very carefully. Because otherwise, if you start getting away from that, you know, it kind of undercuts the purpose of the plan. But, you know, in the event that market forces would start, would start to dictate that that particular parcel is really, really, really suitable for that type of development, that's something that can be revisited. You know, ultimately, the decision for those types of things lies not with me, certainly, but with this body. So it, again, nothing is necessarily restricted from the land use plan. It just expresses the policy intent over that period of time. And in terms of infrastructure expansion, you know, that's one thing that we can try to. It, it's very difficult to project, you know, specific infrastructure costs. They're variable over time, you know, something that's in play, something that you expand next year is very different than something that gets expanded 15 years down the road. What we can do, however, working with, working with the stakeholders and utility providers, is to maybe try to get a general sense of, A, what's realistic and what, you know, or magnitude cost might be for that. But I, I, I don't think that's something that'll be expressed with any really high level of precision, more of just a general idea of what that cost burden would be to expand specific infrastructure. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, I'll find out here in a minute.
Anyone else?
We covered, you know, a little bit on the zoning to Todd's question there. You know, if the zoning could be changed for the developer. About any place I know, they're, they're expecting that developer to cover that cost of that infrastructure, not the county. If they're going to change the zoning. So that's, they've got to prove that they can do that to the planning commission before that zoning can be changed. Or wouldn't do any good if you can't get the infrastructure to have that developed.
No, thanks, thanks for adding that, Robert.
And it, and I, and I think, I mean, hopefully, what this plan will do is to kind of give the utilities, you know, an idea of where we expect that those changes to be, you know, what area, you know. I mean, and I'll be honest, I think in the past, and maybe there'll be more money coming, great money coming, but in the past, it's. but in the past, it's, you know, our, our utilities have been just playing catch-up. I mean, they've just tried, been trying to, you know, and so, but, you know, it might give them an idea of what's coming, you know. But, but as far as the actual, you know, foot of the bill, I mean, it's the developers, if they wanna develop that piece of property, they're gonna have to make it work. As far as capacity and things, hopefully it'll give those utility districts an idea what, you know, we anticipate, so.
I just had one more comment on, you know, we had a big controversy regarding the water authority in Dixon County, sewer plans and dumping the effluent into the, you know, Lake Creek. You know, on the other hand, you know, sewer approach that doesn't end up with effluent going into Lake Creek or another waterway that we wanna protect. You know, those type of criteria, you know, would seem to me to want, you'd wanna apply in growth areas where you'd need sewer function, but you don't want the destruction of other aspects of Hickman County that we treasure. And so that are, you know, that would, would potentially be an expression of preference on the part of the county as to how infrastructure of that type would be accepted. And then there's also, you know, are there goals in terms of, you know, we as a county could certainly use additional tax revenue. And so the growth areas that we have, the nodes, you know, to the, to the extent that encourages the type of development that produces tax revenues for the county is again, something that might be a, you know, a, you know, a stated goal of the plan. And certainly, you know, resident, you know, affordable residential options for, you know, I know Robert talks a lot about, you know, if you got a family member and they can't afford to build a home in Hickman County, that's a problem. And so, you know, that's another area where we wanna be able to provide affordable housing as well for residents.
And, and I guess just to your point, I mean, that, that's another excellent, you know, tax revenue, another excellent example of trade-offs that we'll try to quantify.
Anybody else?
I've, I've got one question for the young lady back there that lives in Pleasantville. And you were talking about keeping the money in Hickman County versus, I assume, going over to Linden.
Yeah, or Dixon.
I mean, if, if somebody were to, if that was a designated kind of a growth area for convenience, somebody comes in and puts a grocery store in, would you, as a consumer, be willing to pay the higher price to keep your money in Hickman County?
I, I've, I've tried to pay the higher price for Hickman County for some of our produce instead of going to Walmart, but it's not, or, or Whole Foods, or. I have an allergy that I have specific foods I have to eat. So I don't, I don't always get the things that I'm looking for at our current grocery stores, unfortunately. So I like to go to the ones that I know I can get things at. I'm unique, of course, but I would pay a higher price for the convenience and for the, also the, because I know our taxpayer dollars help make sure that we have good schools, good, you know, EMS, EMA, you know. So, so yes, I would pay a little more money, especially if it was closed, because gas prices are extremely high, too. But I also know with that comes more traffic and those concerns. So I, you know, it's, it's gonna have to be a trade-off, like you say in the paper, so. But for me, I would like it. I can't say that everybody else would, but I'm also from New Orleans area, so, you know, we do.
All right, what's next?
So what's next? So again, assuming that everybody is generally comfortable with the scenarios that we identified, but the next, the next two things that we need to do to get closer realizing that for the, so one is we need the place types, and we need to populate the scenarios. And we really needed, I guess, buy-in or feedback from you all on the direction of the scenarios in order to make sure that we're developing the proper place types. So we've begun development on that, and we'll be looking to wrap that up, really, and we have the holidays coming up, but in early January, and start populating those scenarios. And I've, I've got that listed as February. Claude, I think what, you know, I were talking about before the meeting was, understanding that I don't want, I know it's, it's, I don't wanna say a burden, but I know it's an ask to get people to come and have these meetings with us. So maybe we can combine those activities and look to have our next stakeholder meeting. And that would include all the various stakeholders that we had out before, maybe late January, early February. And we can, you know, I mentioned that, like, with the place type designations, as we, as we were able to get those drafted, we can go ahead. That'll probably be a fairly high density of information. So that's something that we could share with you all ahead of time, give you an opportunity to review ahead of time, so that we're not springing it on you and reacting in real time. So, and then coming out of that, once we have those draft scenarios out, we'll discuss those with the stakeholders, we'll discuss those with you all. And the other thing that we'd like to discuss at the next meeting is go ahead and look at that next round of public engagement. So we are scoped similarly for the second round. We have four rounds that we, that we can do. And then we also have the online, excuse me, the online interactive tool. And so looking ahead, I know that there's spring break and things like that coming up in March, but it might be good to start thinking about venues and potential dates, maybe in mid to late March, to take that back out to the public. And then at that point, we would look to get everything wrapped up within the next couple of months. So we're gonna probably have a timeline for a draft deliverable. So, you know, a lot of work to do here in the next couple of, here in the next couple of months. But if we can, if we can land on a date for that next meeting, we can kind of work backwards from that.
Okay.
And make sure that we've got everything in our hands in time.
All right, the late January, early February?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
How much time do you think would be involved in that?
Well, our, our meetings tend to run, I mean, we're at an hour and fifteen minutes now with the discussion. I'd really like to get the utility folks in here again, among others.
At the, end of January, first February?
At that, at that meeting. So I would, I would budget two hours for it.
So we probably need to do that separately than our regular planning commission meeting, correct?
Yeah, probably so. I mean, our, our regular plan will be on the fourth of February, wouldn't it?
Or the Tuesday.
Yeah, on the fourth. In January, there's a commission meeting on the twenty-seventh. The January meeting could be a little bit longer. I mean, I don't know about that Tuesday, the twenty-eighth. I mean, there'd be a high school basketball game, but it's probably gonna be a conflict somewhere, I guess. I don't know. I mean, I, I'm thinking that Tuesday, the twenty-eighth, unless anybody has any other suggestions.
I think I'd, I think that'd be a good day. I'd like to do it, you know, after we have our January planning, but before we do our February planning meeting.
Yeah, that's a good one. Uh, well, let's, that January. Robert, if we could try to get a hold of those stakeholders to see if there's.
We sent out an email for this, and some of them, some of them here, I didn't even look back. They're saying on the mayor, the mayor's here.
Yeah, but if we could, just to see, you know, make sure they don't have their board meeting or, you know, something on that date, you know, I mean, I mean, we may not be able to get all of them, but if, you know, we do that, is that what y'all are planning?
Yeah, yeah, we're flexible, that should work.
I'm not trying to say they're all in support, but I think you really need the electrical people involved, above Lewis and Dixon.
Yeah.
Because they would have a lot to do with that. And the water, the utility people.
Yeah.
Water's gonna be a big infrastructure thing for us to deal with.
Sure.
I think the mayor's been working on a lot of that.
Okay. Anything else?
Certainly happy to entertain any other questions. Happy to stick around for a few minutes if, if anybody wants to talk. But that was what we wanted to cover, so we'll take, again, the guidance from you all work towards the draft place types and getting at least an initial sketch of those scenarios together for the January meeting. Again, that'll give us an opportunity. We are gonna get the utility folks in here to get their input on just whether or not that's grounded in, in reality, and something that we can afford. That was really the next step I was looking forward to.
Okay. Anything else? I'll take a motion to adjourn. There it is.